My computer says it's seven thirty. So let's call the meeting to order. And I'll call the roll. Virginia Lewis.
Here.
I'm need.
Here.
Brittany Hoprick.
Here.
And Joni Manson.
Here.
Our alternate Bruce Hamel has indicated to me that he was going to resign. I don't know whether he's submitted his resignation to the trustee. I indicated to him that he needed. Okay. Other officials are present. Those two members of the. Strategic Planning Committee. Bruce McCleary and Jim Steel Smith. And Holly Matai are consultant. Who has been doing a. Outstanding job of working with the Strategic Planning Committee and the trustees. Bringing forward our recommend their recommendations for changes. And the addition of new articles, two of which we are scheduled to consider tonight. So before we get further into that, I don't see anyone in the audience here who looks like they would have an application to present, but we. We wouldn't be receiving those tonight. That was something that should not have been on the agenda here tonight anyway. Review of the minutes. I want to do those. We started on that April third and April tenth. They've been delayed. So let's get that taken care of.
We've kind of started these, didn't we?
You've had them. Yeah, there, there, there's nothing new. The copy that you you had before had all the changes in it. I checked mine from our last meeting and just. By comparing it to to the copy that I I submitted. And all the changes were included. Brittany has. Why don't you go ahead and make your suggestion here at this point?
Oh, sure.
Cause I think it's an idea. We'll try to implement it.
Yeah, aside from the Google Docs, which we don't know if we're allowed to do that or not. Maybe. I don't know, Mike, if you want to explore that with the trustees to see if we're even allowed to do that, but.
I would check that out with with Kendra to see whether or not it can become an option or not.
Okay. But.
I am Google. I use Google Docs on my back. I assume it it will work on.
It works on anything that has an internet browser, so.
Okay.
So.
So.
Okay. Aside from that, my suggestion, because I think that there was some question as to we weren't sure. If all of the changes that we had submitted had been captured in the document that was printed out. And sometimes I personally didn't always remember the ones that I requested to find if they were in there. Would it make sense if Amanda or whoever provided us with a redlined copy? And then we could see what had been changed. And then, you know, that would give us better visibility of what had been updated. And then we can. Approve that as corrected. And then she can accept the changes and forward the clean copy on.
And add any more changes.
And any other changes. Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, just to give us visibility. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't. I don't see why that that can't be done that way, but I'll. For the for right now, since Amanda is going to do the minutes for tonight, I'll have to call her tomorrow. And find out about going ahead and doing that and then submitting it to us. But in order to do the minutes. For tonight's meeting, she has indicated to me that. You know, because they're leaving town, she'll have to have any recommendation. She'll do the get the draft to us tomorrow. And then. She will. Make the changes and get them get those back to us by the twenty fifth because she's leaving town.
Okay.
She's leaving town on vacation. So.
It's very fast.
I'll talk with her tomorrow and we'll see if she can't just take whatever changes she receives. On the document that she sends out to us. And then send that send that document out to us with the red line with the items that have been changed. And the strikeouts that may be there and leave it that way. Don't. Accept the changes. Just submit it to us. Hopefully she'll be able to do that. Shouldn't be a problem for her to do it that way. It's just a matter of making sure she gets the message. Because it's a change. But we'll try it. See if we can make it work. Okay. That takes us back then to April third. One change that. We made the last time was which we identified and I've noted down here. On my copy is Virginia and. Mike Cannon were the ones who did the walkabout, not me.
I had one other thing. I had a question about. The last page, second to third to last paragraph. Talking about Tom said. That once the article is adopted into the resolution, the residents could apply for a referendum to accept an overlay district onto their property.
Where, where, where is it?
A third to last paragraph.
Mr. Bryant.
Yeah, it starts Mr. Bryant. But the the second sentence or last sentence, Mr. Needs stated that once the article is adopted into the resolution, residents could apply for a referendum to accept an overlay district onto their property.
What would be.
Did you say that, Tom?
Probably not, but but once it's accepted into the resolution, residents can apply to have the overlay district. Pull down to their on their property. So mainly the referendum comes out.
Yes. So my other thing on that, and that is not necessarily minutes related is just. I feel like we keep getting hung up on. Is this a hearing? Is this just a meeting? Is this an application? Is this a? Pulling down the cloud. So I don't know if if somewhere it would be useful to like make ourselves a list of definitions. Because I feel like several times we've gone back and forth and said, well, no, in the new overlay, it won't be this. It'll be that. We don't have to call it a hearing. It'll just be this. And so I feel like I'm a little unclear on what all the terminology is now for everything. If I'm the only one, then I'll figure it out eventually, but. Just.
You're not the only one.
And maybe Holly, that's something you have like a ready made list of, you know, for overlays this for. I don't know. But I just feel like we're. We're about to get swamped with things here. And so it'd be nice if we were all on the same page.
When we. We have a hearing when there's going to be a change in the zoning resolution, a change in the zoning map. Once the overlay district is approved, we don't hold hearings. No.
But what is that called then?
Yeah, you do have a public hearing, but it's on the development plan. It's not.
But oh, yeah. I see what you're saying. That's different.
So this is my point, though. I think there's some some confusion of terms.
It's almost the the rezoning is a legislative hearing, whereas the.
That's.
Under the.
Administrative.
Administrative.
It's an administrative ministerial act.
So so do we take the time to? To note that in public notices, this is an administrative hearing. This is a legislative hearing? So that we don't have a bunch of people showing up to one of these overlay hearings saying. We don't want this. This isn't, you know, trying to trying to shoot it down when in effect they can't.
Well, they can make their input with regard to the development plan. Absolutely.
Yes, but I think I think that is.
Is the purpose of having that. Public administrative hearing.
Yes, but I think it's semi misleading to list them as both hearings and have public think. Well, if I don't like it, then I'll just get my neighbors. I'll do a referendum and we'll move from there.
I I think we probably should come up with some standard language that goes on the notice for the development plans, saying that this is an administrative act. It is not subject to a referendum and is only applicable to courts. Not saying that that's the exact language I can use, but something along those lines.
When they are that when the public notices for the.
Overlays.
The development plan.
Yeah.
That and I certainly that should be done.
Yeah.
And that will help to provide that clarity.
Yeah, and that's fine. I just wanted to make sure since reading this comment and being like, wait a second, how does this actually work? I just want to make sure. We're all on the same page with our terminology and we're trying to be transparent with the public.
I think. I think you're. Your point that you're making and what Holly has reminded us about is that the difference between the legislative decision and the administrative decision. Once we've got the overlays in place, it's administrative.
Yeah.
Which then is not subject to referendum.
But it's still a hearing.
But it's still a hearing. Because that's what it's called.
Yeah.
Revised code. All right. And so we need to take this word referendum out.
I think we need to take out for a referendum. Could apply to accept an overlay district onto their property.
Yes.
That.
So we're going to put the period after. After zoning resolution?
No, no, we want to take out for a referendum.
You're in the next paragraph down, one paragraph up.
I'm reading the right paragraph.
No, you're not.
A member of SBC stated.
No, no, no.
No?
The next one of.
Above it.
Oh. Sorry, it's four referendum is in there twice, isn't it? Okay. Mr. Need, this is the sentence you want.
Yes. So is it still applying to accept an overlay or apply and accept are proper terms there?
To apply.
To apply.
Not. Okay, so it's not even could apply to accept an overlay district. It's just simply residents could apply. For an overlay district.
So we're going to change the wording from what's there. It's going to read. Adopted into the resolution. That residents could apply for an overlay district.
Yes.
On their property. We can instead of on to just say on. Everybody in agreement?
Sounds good.
Okay. I made that change. This copy is the one I'll give back to. To Amanda.
Mike, on that same page that you had the correction for Mr. Cabler to Mr. Cannon.
Uh huh.
That the second paragraph, did that first sentence get corrected? It has two sets in there. Set hearings set for.
And.
But did it get corrected?
Then which which what needs corrected? I don't know. I don't know what you're referring to.
This right here, this right here. It has two sets.
Oh. It's in the second paragraph. He used to said hearings. Take out the second set. Yeah. Anything else?
I do have one thing on the last page, the first paragraph. Um, it doesn't it doesn't read quite right. It says. Mr. Needs stated that the goal is to shorten the process of getting amendments to the zoning resolution approved at the zoning commission. Should that be zoning commission meeting? Or by the zoning commission? I don't think I don't think zoning commission is a place zoning commission meeting is a place. So should it be by the zoning commission then?
And and rather than.
Am I reading?
It's like considered. Considered by the zoning by the zoning commission.
Goes to shorten the process. Of.
Well, it's.
What?
Process of getting a met, yeah.
So the zoning resolution.
Are we shortening the process of approving or reviewing? Maybe. I don't know. Doesn't seem right.
I think he did mean approve by in that case.
Yes. That's how instead of having to go to a hearing with the trustees as well. So. You're short the process of of. Proven.
You just want to go with shorten the process of amending the zoning resolution?
Yeah, the process of of or amending zoning resolution. By the zoning or at a zoning commission hearing or the process of. So have to go.
All right, so I'm going to read this. As Tom has amended it, it was his statement. Mr. Needs stated that the goal is to shorten the process of amending the zoning resolution. At a zoning commission hearing instead of having to go to a hearing with the trustees as well.
Sounds good.
Mr. Needs stated trustees will still need to vote on each amendment, but not hold a hearing on. Each one.
Sounds good.
Since in seven forty five, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as corrected to the April third regular monthly meeting.
All right.
Second.
And is there a second now as corrected?
Virginia first. Brittany was the second.
And. Brittany seconded. All right, what about the minutes for April the tenth? That's one that is a workshop meeting. I wasn't present.
I didn't have any.
For that. So. I was out of town on vacation then.
Well, if I don't hear anything, then I'll make a motion that we approve that one. As not corrected as is.
As is.
As presented.
All right.
Presented. Well, that was easy.
Did you second it again?
I'll second that. He will second.
All right, Virginia moved and. Brittany seconded. Any further discussion? Very none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, those minutes are approved as submitted to us.
Yeah, I'm watching the girls tonight. So I'm trying not to sleep late.
Okay. Great. I'll make the announcement about the under new business later. Let's go ahead and. Recess our regular meeting at this point so we can start the hearing. That was scheduled to begin at seven forty five and we're doing that at seven forty seven. That we're recessing. And I'll call the roll for the hearing. Starting with Virginia again, Virginia Lewis.
Here.
I'm need.
Here.
Brittany Hoprick.
Here.
Joni Manson.
Here.
Mike Cabler here. All right, so now we've opened the hearing. And the first. We have two articles that were considered today, but the first one that we're going to address is going to be Article thirty three. And. Do we have? Members of the public participating or is it just Molly? Okay. Well, everyone knows the members here and we call the roll. There's no additional officials present except for two members of the. Strategic Planning Committee. Bruce McCleary and Jim Steel Smith are here. A member of the public is present, Bob Singer. And. Before we go further, in case there's anyone who does join us, the rules and procedures that we're going to follow. If there is anyone present. In the audience here tonight in person. When it comes time for public participation, I ask that you will go to the podium. And when you reach the podium, you state your name and your address so that we can get that information recorded. Whether you're in here in person or online, only one person can speak at a time. But right now, since our audio is not working in terms of hearing members of the public out there. You would have to submit your questions and comments to us via chat. And we will try to make sure that we're we're checking on that so that we don't miss. The opportunity for someone to ask a question if they do have one. All right, with that in mind then, at this point, I'm going to really to ask Holly Matai, our consultant. And she would kind of give us a quick overview so that we will have that information for those members of the public. It pulls out.
I know. I'm going to do it faster, doesn't it? There you go.
For those who would need. Some additional information as to what it is that we are dealing with. This particular article is Article thirty three. Clustered Residential Conservation District. Holly, turn it over to you.
Great. I'm just going to briefly go over this so that we can get straight into your comments and get your concerns and questions addressed. So this is the clustered residential conservation district. It's mimicking your existing planned residential conservation district. But it's intended to address subdivisions that have water and central water and sewer available to. So it's the same kind of concept where fifty percent of the open space is required. And then clustering the density on the other remaining fifty. The first thing I want to point out, Molly and I were just texting with that. When we did the MU district, you had us pull out the blue hyperlinked words and just make them all regular black text. And that was not done before we went to a public hearing on this draft. So we will do that. Before we go to the trustees on the CRCD. So we just wanted to point that out because those are shown in blue. If you're actually looking at her screen, it doesn't show up on a black and white copy, but. So just wanted to point that out. Uh, the obviously the first thing we talk about in this thirty three. Article thirty three is the purpose. I'm talking about how it is a by nineteen point oh two one C as in cat overlay district. So once this zoning. Gets approved into the zoning text, it is shown on the zoning map as an overlay district. The existing zoning, underlying zoning continues to apply to all properties. The overlay just hovers over top of it. On once it goes into effect, a landowner can apply to pull down that cloud via a development plan. And come to you and ask for approval. We'll go through the procedures later. But what this article is doing is telling everyone the development standards that must be adhered to in order to get a development plan approved. If you go to page two. There is a map. Of the overlay district. You'll see it's consistent with what we were showing in the Quick Strategy Guide as far as where the clustered residential conservation district would apply. We have broken it down by density a little bit more than what we did in the Quick Strategy Guide. We are showing two units an acre, sorry, three units an acre on the southern side. And then Corset and then Robbins Road is the dividing line. North of that area, we are showing it as two dwelling units per acre, trying to taper it back out as you get towards Center Village and the areas to the north. That would be farther from the proposed sewers that are coming in the next couple of years. Going on to Holly.
And I just mentioned on that map. We probably should take out the mixed use and phrase there because you don't show those.
You are correct. Thank you.
Do you want to go through the whole article and then we'll comment or comment section by section or now it's easier for you?
What's easier for you? I don't care either way.
Well. In terms of the input from the zoning commission. We can go through and deal with it each as we go with each section. And if if it's a question that that may be present that we would want to deal with Holly or address it to Holly, we can do that. Or if you're going to be proposing changes in the article, we need to do it. Because so that at this point, rather than just being it recorded on Zoom, that Molly can do it. And maybe the simplest way to do that is to go through it. Section by section or page by page as you're here. And then I I thanks Tom for bringing that up. I think that's probably a better way to do it.
Yep.
I was going to have you do an overview, but there's public isn't.
Really? Yeah, nobody.
Probably know what's going on.
Exactly. So I I'm fine with doing it section by section.
Yeah.
But I think.
I think that's probably. More efficient tonight, given the circumstances that we're dealing with.
I agree. Okay, perfect. Anything else? Do you want to go back to the beginning then?
So section thirty three oh one purpose. I see, you know, the the definition line has come out. That's good. All the links are coming out. That's good. The last sentence in the first paragraph reads the CRCD achieves this purpose by allowing the development of clustered conservation subdivisions. In plural. That permanently preserve. So if we're going to if we're going to recast all of these A through I, it should be in. Laurel. So instead of permanently preserves, it should be permanently preserve and integrate and the same all the way down through all first step. So. And then when we get down to I. Allows for smaller lots that are served by central sewers. I think that's. Maybe inaccurate. It doesn't allow for smaller lies, smaller than what first, but I think what it's it requires. All lots must be served by central sewer. So we're not really saying smaller than smaller than what or larger than what. It's it's not really the size as much as it has to be served by. Central sewers.
But isn't the the point of the clustering is that? Because you are saving half of your area. You don't. You can go with smaller. Lots.
Oh, is that?
Yes, but it does. It's not explained here. You're saying smaller lots.
I just saw the.
Smaller than what? Smaller than they would have been, smaller than a different district. And that's what struck me when I read that is it it. It's it doesn't explain itself.
Mike, are you trying to get into? Zoom?
I was getting on just so that I could see.
Okay, I'm going to admit you then.
And then I can, if you make me a co-host, if I notice someone else, then I can let them in too. I usually sign up that way. No, I need to. We can. Yeah, they're getting feedback, but see if I let I could hear it on my. I can't leave it on. I've got it muted. Okay.
Joni, I understand what you're saying. And maybe, you know, part of that is. Is dealt within C establishes a less sprawling or establish the subdivisions establish a less sprawling, more efficient use of land. Rather than saying an I allows for smaller lots. And if that if that's. If that's not enough, then I think we can.
Or or you can add add allow for smaller lots than standard districts. While being served by central sewers or when being served by central sewers.
I think since it's the purpose, it doesn't need to be super. In depth because that comes later. So I think we can take I out because of C being in there.
But the point is that it is that the served by central sewers is. Is is critical. That's the whole rationale for the.
I I I agree because I've had situations where if we hadn't had something in there saying that sewers are required. We've had people try to do onsite systems in other communities.
Okay.
So with smaller lots, which doesn't make sense. Um.
Well, what's the wording that we're talking about doing?
Typically, you would put that as one of your criteria, not necessarily as part of the purpose, because the purpose is supposed to say what you're trying to achieve.
That's that's what I'm saying. Like, I think we absolutely need to put you have to have central sewer, but I just don't think it needs to be in the purpose because. That's.
So I would, I let's go with your idea of taking I out, but then go back up to C and where it says establishing or establish. A less sprawling, more efficient use of land, street and utilities. Where central water and sewer are provided or something on this.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Or in locations where.
Central sewers are available.
Yep.
Locations or tracks.
Tracks are fine. On tracks. Tracks are fine, on tracks.
Okay, so it's gonna read establishes a less sprawling, more efficient use of land, streets and utilities where central water and sewer are available.
On tracks where central, I mean, do you want on tracks where central sewer, central water and sewer are available?
Okay, so we're adding the phrase on tracks in there.
Molly, are you able to hear us?
All right, and then section thirty-three oh two.
And we took out I.
And we took and we took out.
Can I ask a question before we move on? So where are we saying here, you know, pursuant of section five nineteen point oh two one C? Of the Ohio revised kill code, do those sections change ever or are they like set in stone?
They're not set in stone. They'd have to go through the legislative process to change. They haven't changed in years.
Okay, so I'm just wondering if, you know, where we put those numbers in here. Are we opening ourselves up to risk if those do change, then we have to redo this?
They're gonna have to redo every.
Do they have to be in there?
They have to be in there. They have to be in, if they're not in there, we're not legally setting this up the correct way.
And if it does change, then you do have.
Exactly.
Okay, so we will be alerted if it changes then?
Yeah, they'll be.
I imagine there won't be a lot of.
There would be a lot of pushback. There's a lot of places adopting these right now, so if the legislature came out and changed it, there would be a lot of.
And it and in the past, when that has happened and it's necessary for a change to be made, we get notices about it. That we then have to make changes.
All right, good.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Uh, section thirty-three oh two, um. That in the middle of that paragraph overlays all land bounded by the CRCD boundaries on the map below. Well, it's not below, so I would I would say rather than above below, I would or the next page, I would just say in figure thirty-three point one. And label the map as figure thirty-three point one. And that follows the the style that we've used in the uh comprehensive plan.
We have to change that on the following page.
We have to change it on the following page too. Um, so in the map, um in figure thirty-three point oh one. Um here it says on the effective date of this amendment, on the next page or beginning of page uh section thirty-three or three, it says as of the effective date of this amendment rather than on. And I think it should say as of, this is not simply on that date, it's from that date onwards.
Where's the other one at?
So the first, well, the first one is the end of the second line.
Yeah.
And the other one is the very beginning of section thirty-three oh three. It says as of the effective date, which I think is the way it should be in both places.
Well, wait a minute. The second one refers to all the information about this overlay stuff. The first one refers to when the CRCD is created. I don't think it really. So it's created on uh effective day rather than.
But again, I go back to if it's if it's 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 nitpicky, but it's on a certain date means that date. And it's as of a certain date means from that date onwards. And I think that's what senses, but I don't wanna, I don't want to spend any time.
I'm fine with as of in both.
Um and then on the on the map, um Joni pointed out, it should not be mixed use and but it also it's no longer proposed boundaries. It is, I think the word proposed comes out. It's labeled as figure thirty-one point one, I'm sorry, thirty-three point one.
Oh, one or one?
Um, well, the the style of the comprehensive plan would be thirty-three point one. And and it's it goes point one, point two, point three, it's.
Even though the sections are point oh one.
And maybe it's less confusing because the section numbers don't.
I'd actually wouldn't want it to be thirty-three point oh one because then it's conflicting thirty-three point oh one.
Yeah.
And you're saying it's a figure, so you're starting with thirty-three point one.
Uh so figure thirty-three point one, boundaries of Harlem Township spelled out. Uh CRCD overlay districts. Um, and then if possible, if you can grab the map and make it bigger.
Can we, this this copy that I have of the map from a while ago is a lot clearer than the one that's in here. Can, can we get a clearer version in here?
I think it's because we have a color turned up, colors turned on. We can turn the colors off because that map, the colors are turned off.
Well, the issue we have with the colors turned off is this middle line. You can't really see that that's where red and blue divide. I don't know, it just looks a lot more pixelated on the copy in here than it does on there, but I'm not gonna hold you up on it.
Well, at the time that it's printed, we'll just try to do, get a better printing process. It has to do with the copying process probably as much as anything.
The the better thing is probably to turn the colors off and cross hatch it in the colors.
If you can.
We can do that.
Crosshatching sounds like it would make it even harder to read.
But we don't want to lose the the boundaries of the lots.
If it's easy to make it clear, great. If it's not, I think it's okay the way it is. I'm not, I don't want to spend a ton of time on that.
It looks pretty clear on the screen.
I think it's the way it's printing.
Yes, it doesn't clear up.
Okay, it's much better on the screen than it is in print.
Um, can we move on to thirty-three oh three? Are we there yet?
I started describing it, so go ahead.
Uh, so we we have, it begins with as of, we're okay. Um at the end in by the C R C D boundaries in the map above, I would say change to in the map in figure thirty-three point one. Um and then reading the last two paragraphs. If the zoning commission determines that the application and development plan do not comply with the uh regulations of Article thirty-three of this resolution, the zoning commission shall deny the application. I don't think that's the process. We have to send the application to the trustees no matter what. We get to recommend.
Recommend.
So either either take out a- and then the next, um. If the zoning commission determines that the application and development plan comply with the regulations of Article thirty-three, it shall approve the application. Again, I think there's that's not, that's not exactly the process.
I agree.
So should we take those two paragraphs out or?
No, we'll, we leave them in and we say recommend in front of them.
Shall shall recommend denial of the application or shall recommend approval of the.
Correct.
So recommend denial of instead of deny. Um and shall recommend approval of the of the application.
So recommending approval doesn't cause the zoning map to be changed, right? It's not until the trustees approve it?
Correct.
That's correct. Should that come out or?
So do we need to add something in there to that effect? However, you want to say.
And that it gets sent to the trustees and then the trustees approval of the application and development plan showered and the removal of the prior zoning.
But the the trustees still have the option of approving, denying or modifying. It's 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 tricky.
You know, I think honestly, because your procedure section has all of how that lays out of the recommendations and then the trustees, that we actually just keep the paragraphs the way they are and change town zoning commission to township trustee. So if the township trustee is determined that the application and development do not comply. And then the same thing, if the trustee is determined that the application of the development plan comply. Then we don't have to change, we don't have to add anything in because they're the ones with the final decision.
We're just taking zoning commission out. And leaving everything else the same.
Correct.
And recommend denial goes out. Um. It's also becomes board of trustees.
We go up to that third, the third paragraph to the top. Where it says upon receiving such an application, the zoning commission shall determine whether the application and development plan comply with those regulations. And of Article thirty-three and make a rec um make a recommendation to the township trustee. And then say this recommendation shall not be considered amendment.
That's in addition to that sentence. Whether they shall determine whether the application and development plan comply with the regulations of Article thirty-three. And make a recommended, make make a recommendation.
Yep.
Are you getting all those changes, Molly? Okay.
Then uh small things, um in the second paragraph from the bottom. Last, the last line can file a chapter twenty-five oh six appeal pursuant to section should be capitalized. And there should be a space between section and five one nine.
I have no idea where you.
Um.
That's okay though, I believe you.
What?
I said, I don't know where you are, but I believe you.
Yes, I see where you are.
So I'm still in thirty.
Oh, thank you, we still good thing.
Um, and then, um. Just for consistency, um. Comply with the regulations of Article thirty-three, sometimes we say, um. Um, Article thirty-three of this resolution. Uh sometimes we say reg- uh regulations of Article thirty-three, sometimes we say with the CRCD regulations of Article thirty-three. So I would say in that second paragraph from the bottom, I would take out CRCD from the word right before the word regulations. Because that's that sticks out, but whether we want to say Article thirty-three of this resolution in every case or not. Just for consistency. And I will stop there.
Anybody else have anything on thirty-three point oh three?
Section thirty-three point oh three, we're finished. Apparently so, no one commented.
All right, so thirty-three point oh four permitted uses. Um this allows single family detached dwellings, common wall, single family attached dwellings. We utilize that language because that's what's in your current code. That basically means uh a duplex. Uh, open space talks about fifty percent of the gross tract acreage being reserved as open space.
Do we have, um, insert like must be in front of reserved? Or?
Um. That's covered under thirty-three point oh seven B. This is just saying that open space is a permitted use. And then D accessory service buildings and structures and are incidental and pertinent to the permitted uses above.
And can we look at at that C again and at the end of the uh sentence, the next to the last sentence at the end. Where we have uh shall be determined by the developer and or the homeowners. Can we add but must comply with requirements in this article's development plan standards? I'm afraid a bunch of homeowners will just decide to make changes. Because it says we can allow them to make changes. Doesn't bother me.
So Judy, but uh Johnny, but must comply with develop development.
The requirements in these, this article's development plan standards.
Must comply with the approved development plan, what it should say.
Yes.
That sounds good.
Good. Uh, the only question I have is whether there's any need to define further what limited agricultural uses or we just go with it.
Do you have anything in your? You don't have anything in your existing code.
That I know. I mean, I I I'm not, I'm not afraid of leaving it the way it is.
I'm afraid of leaving it because it's an overlay district and you can determine what limited agriculture is at the time of development and approval.
We don't need to define it, we just forget it.
When somebody comes and asks for a pig farm in their CRCD, we say. Nothing better than a bunch of houses clustered around a bunch of pigs.
Section thirty-three point oh five prohibited uses. Uh uses not specifically authorized by the press article.
I have a question about the the next sentence, about conditional use permits. If uses are something that we don't even allow divergences on. Which is said later in the the standards here. Why they, why are we even suggesting they can get a conditional use permit?
I think, is that language in your current?
Yeah.
If it is, we can.
I think we just get rid of it. I think we carried that over. I don't think that applies to this. So let's just get rid of that sentence.
Good. What about the limited home occupations? Are they going to be prohibited now because it's not, um.
You don't need, you don't need to.
For limited, they don't need it. You're right. Limited, as long as, and it does say limited in here.
Mm-hmm, correct. If you go on down to um F, it says no commercial or business activity shall be conducted in a unit designed for residential use except for limited home.
Right.
Yeah, that's right. Limited is doesn't require permit anymore.
Um, just a couple of small things on the uh section thirty-three oh five A. Uh the first line, I think we need a space between the words express and terms.
You don't think there's a space there?
Half a space.
Hard to see.
I don't know. And then usually when we refer to this article of the zoning resolution, we re- usually refer to is this article of the township zoning resolution. So I would add the word township just to be consistent. And and then on the last line of that page, uh for a period exceeding fourteen consecutive days, I would move the number fourteen ahead of consecutive.
I agree.
Holly on that section, um A. Was there a change that was made at the trustee meeting? Or was?
There was a change.
Decision.
Wanted to be made, but we left it the way it was.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that I was remembering it correctly because if there was a change made, we should match it here.
Yeah, we did not change it.
Uh, I'm done with thirty-three oh five.
Anybody else on thirty-three point oh five?
Yeah, there's limited home occupations.
Tom, do you have anything on one line for thirty-three point oh six?
Do you want me to? Do you expect me to?
Yeah, yeah, actually.
Yeah, what is it?
Procedures instead of procedure?
Well, no, actually, it's just, it's just the formatting. You know, there's too many line spaces after.
I see that, yeah.
Oh, so you do see it.
I do see that.
If I wasn't such a nice guy.
Thirty-three point oh seven.
Don't have anything until part C.
Site design process.
I have something number four, site C four and then four IV. Um instead of replant, should we uh change that to restore? I think we've been.
Where were you?
Wait, for it says, okay, so C and then four and then.
Four.
Uh four IV. It says retain or replant, I think we, we've kind of been leaning towards restore instead of replant.
Could be that, I was looking for the English IV, and it wasn't, it's just IV.
IV period.
On three above that, um oh so. So under the design standards, site design standards in general.
The process or the standards?
Right, um almost all of them start with a verb. So we have um front dwellings and retain, preserve, preserve, protect, preserve, landscape or retain. But the first one. Uh dwellings should be typically, dwellings should typically be located, I think that should be in the pet- in the active. Should just be locate dwellings.
Do you want me to re- remove to reduce visual impact?
No, I would just take out should typically be located.
Dwellings.
So locate dwellings. Along the edges rather than in the center of an open field. If they will be seen or visible from existing public roads. Um two is front dwellings on internal roads. Number three, again, I would put locate all house lots within four hundred feet of the permanent open space. Um so that must be. Uh and then I would put in, in, in text four hundred in front of the. The numbers four hundred. Number twelve. Um we took out asphalt from the bike paths in the. Last version of the PR CD.
I I Xed that out as well.
So I would, I would remove the word asphalt.
Back up to number eight. Um I would put and et cetera after burial grounds because those two examples are not.
All inclusive.
Good.
Yeah, or either historical.
Yeah, good. Ride protect. Number thirteen. Uh protect natural drainage swells and creeks, uh no construction of buildings. Um I would, I would add the word is allowed inside the one to your flood plain. And then I would add something that I've not given complete thought to, but. Within or within two hundred feet of its edge. So that what I've been reading about in terms of protecting wetlands and protecting repairing corridors is. You have to pull the development back from the edge. And the woman that used to, that I've been talking to, used to be the executive director of the Sugarin River Conservation Area up in. Jogge County, I think, and that's what she recommended, two hundred feet. I don't know if we can afford to do that, but.
Yeah, I I don't think we should just throw it in there without doing any kind of analysis.
I think, I think there should be some buffer, and I think that's the place for it. Do you want to look more into it or you want, I mean, I'm I'm going to keep looking, but.
Yeah, we'll look too.
Then going up um or going back to the beginning. Um third, section thirty-three oh seven um uh letter A. Uh minimum tract size for CRC subdivision twenty-five acres. Um and since I was tired and reading through this for the ninth time, I said, is that net or gross? Um and then I went back to what, what it says in the line below there. Um we talk about gross tract acreage, and we talked about gross tracked acreage on the previous page under thirty-three oh four C. I think we should use that verbiage gross tracked acreage instead of just tract size.
I don't have the definitions with me right at the moment either, um we should check how it defines.
Tracked the entire area of a proposed development.
That's the gross, so we're fine.
Again, it just was confusing when I read it and it, since it wasn't consistent, I was just saying, why shouldn't it be gross tracked acreage? So if you're okay with that. A very, very minor thing um. The second, the end of the second line of B. Open space location shall be identified on the development plan. And sometimes we say on the development plan, sometimes we say in the development plan. Which, does anybody care?
I don't care which way.
But.
Only you care.
That's, that's fine.
I think every place else where we've talked about um marking the overs, the open space has been on the maps. Uh on us, rather than in the text part. Um and I think that might be the difference, when they're talking about text parts, we might say in and on maps, we might say on.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm, we're just perfectly, finally, just leave it the way it is.
The way I've been reading it.
Then under number B two. Primary conservation areas, and we have primary and secondary conservation areas. I don't think they're defined anywhere, and I don't think they're explained in the text where I could find it. And so I'm not sure whether we need to. Build something around that. To explain what, what we mean by that.
Was that originally defined in article thirteen?
That is part of your PR CD.
Yeah.
Should we bring in some verbiage from there?
Or can we send all of them just to the definitions instead of putting it both places?
I did, that's perfectly fine, if we had.
Well, we've already done the definitions with the next year's third adopted. I wouldn't admit.
So that may be true, but with Scott Sanders, we're going through and revising the code as a whole. So is that something that we should note to put in the definitions with him? Because I think our, we've talked about our goal being standardized as much as possible in a standard location, so I think.
I'm okay.
If we put a definition here, and at some point we change or edit the definition, we now have it two places.
That this is going to go first.
I would say just leave this as is and. If somebody needs an explanation when they're in a meeting with us.
You haven't had a problem yet, and it's what it is in PR CD, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we've only done one of them, I mean, but the problem I see is that it feeds into net developable acres. Acreage, and that's critical to the calculation. And so if somebody's going to say, well, is it primary or secondary, and I have no way of telling, the zoning inspector has no way of telling them that I know.
Somewhere or other, I do remember that we, we at least gave examples of what primary and secondary was.
We, we talked about it, and I've got notes from a meeting months, months ago. Um one was uh natural open space and one was not.
Yeah, and that's how, and the next page on C two. Is that where you were? I was on B two. So on C two, to delineate secondary conservation areas preserved as improved areas. And up at the top, primary is natural open. Like primary, it looks to me as primary has to be natural open space and secondary can be either.
So I think since that's stated in there, we just leave it as is for now. And when we get to adding things to the definitions of the resolution, we make notes somewhere that that is something we'd like to elaborate on.
So can we? Take out the word common, since they, they're both common space. And take the parentheses out from improved and just have reserve selected areas as improved or natural open space. And the other is should preserve as natural open space. And that's the difference. Okay.
And that then matches thirteen. It will.
Good, okay.
Well, we have to change thirteen, but that, that is the language, it's thirteen.
Okay. And the last uh the. That's defined here. I'm on the next page. Uh under D. It just needs to be a hard space after. It before determining. And then I think the number two doesn't belong there, the, we don't, it's, I don't think that. Table is number two.
So we probably don't need number one then either, because normally you don't put just a single number.
Uh so then you would just uh continue that after. So number one comes out and this gets.
Yeah, you're right, I never understand.
So there should be a, a um. A long dash after the word units permitted.
You want to call it figure?
This is, well, these are um in the, in the um comprehensive plan, we had tables. And we had figures and they were different, and they were numbered consecutively as tables.
So three, table thirty-three point one. And take out table below.
So we're going to label them now, so.
But that's, that's going to mean you got to label everything. I can see Molly smiling.
That's going to require a lot of.
Smile.
Potentially, then that's going to require a lot of changes in here. I've got a lot of tables.
Yeah, but and we don't have any numbers on them, so we just add to what those numbers are. We're not having to change anything.
So the, the permitted density is noted in the table below, you're going to leave that or is noted in table? Thirty-three point one.
On the table, as table very briefly.
Okay.
Okay.
Under F, I think I personally would take all the different rights of ways and indent them a little further. But. I see you have yours numbered, I guess, in some way indicate that there's a list there.
Um and then where it says seventy-five feet and fifty feet and thirty feet, we need spelled out. But more than that um. Uh right of way, uh according to ODOT is hyphenated. We have it hyphenated, we're not hyphenated, sometimes capitalized, sometimes lowercase, so I would just have it lowercase hyphenated. Search and change.
On the last line of F, it is hyphenated, but in the line above that.
It is not.
Yes, and then there's, there's some. Yeah, so um. And then um to do. In table thirty-three point one, where it says maximum dwelling units per net developable acre. Um I added an asterisk rounded down to the nearest whole number, is that necessary in that place?
No, you don't want it. Rounded down to the nearest whole number, so if somebody comes out to two point two two.
They get two.
They get two, I see what you're saying, yeah.
But does it belong there or somewhere else? I, it's the only, it's the only place where we have twos and threes, so.
I just don't want, if somebody is in sub area B where you can get three. I don't want somebody to say. Not to two point two two, you only get two. Cause they're in an area where you can have three.
Oh. So Tom's wording might do that.
Let me think about that. I don't know.
I don't know that it's really necessary, nobody's going to build a point two house.
Yeah, and you, and you can't go, you can't go past two.
You can't go past two in sub area A, but you can go to three in sub area B.
And you can go blow them.
Right.
But when you're calculating, but I was thinking, I was thinking of it in a different way, when you're calculating net developable acres. Uh and you come up with um. Forty-four. Have we had on Steiner? And then you multiply that, well, in this case, you multiply a whole number by a whole number. You get a whole number, but it, let's say the net develop Lakers came out to forty, forty-five and a half. And you multiply that by three, you get a half of something.
Then it's capped at three.
N- no, but, but the total number of units in that development comes out to. Less than a whole number or more than a whole.
But if you tried to put that other unit in, you would be over three, so that unit has to come out to get you under three.
I think she's right, Tom.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, so you're saying if it kept forty, forty, forty-five and a half times three, one thirty-six and a half.
They would only get one thirty-six.
They can only get one thirty-six.
One thirty-six and a half, we put them over three.
Okay, so, so we don't need that asterisk and we don't need that. Uh letter E sewage disposal. Um for centralized sanitary sewer usage, they, they all have, I, I would take that phrase out. And I would just put in a capital A, a feasibility letter shall be provided by the Delaware County Sanitary Engineer. Indicated that centralized sanitary sewer service is available with the capacity needed. Okay. In item F. An existing state county or township roadway, just remember that, that verbiage. Um and for purposes of this overlay, the proposed right of way with hyphens shall be considered to be colon maybe, I don't know. Item G. At the very end uh of the last line, last full line, effectively manage water, I think that should be storm water, one word.
Where are you?
Uh I'm in letter G at the very end of the paragraph, the last full line. Effectively manage water without the. I think we're talking about effectively manage storm water. Um and one line above that, regional detention ponds, and I would add and wetlands. In order to integrate the detention pond, I would just say the stormwater feature instead of the second time we say detention pond. So we don't, we don't know if it can be a pond or a wetland.
You're saying that somebody might use a wetland as their stormwater feature?
Yes. Steiner is.
Is he?
Yeah.
The army force allowing that? Wow.
Nobody has pushed back on it so far.
They didn't use to.
Right? Bruce, I mean, they're, the wetlands, as far as we know, they're.
Okay.
There was pushback initially, and then I kept bugging.
That same subdivision I was telling you about in Violet, that's done a fifty percent, they were trying to use a wetland. As their stormwater, and they were not allowed to. As their stormwater, and they were not allowed to.
But and you're saying the 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 club engineers.
But it could be a different district, because it's Fairfield County, I don't know.
No, it would be the same.
Are they the same?
Cause they've never come up in discussion before, it's always been the county engineer. And the drainage engineers.
Oh, they didn't get Army Corps approval?
I don't know if they did or not, I've never heard of the, all I know is that they have not said no.
Our our, the Fairfield County Engineers Office always relies back onto the Army Corps, that's why, okay.
I know.
It sounds like a can of worms, we may not wanna open it though. If they're gonna let it, don't question it.
Um, H. Uh, public streets and old drainage improvement shall conform to the subdivision standards Delaware County, Ohio. I would put a period there. Because I don't know that we have the authority to otherwise approve. Anything different. For that, or as otherwise approved per the development plan, I took that out.
Let's think about that for a moment. So if you recall, there was issues of. I believe Steiner's development where you guys did not have sidewalks, and then they wanted sidewalks under the subdivision regulations. Um, and I said that's an, an area I'd go to bat to try to. Push back at Delaware County because. Again, in Fairfield County, if we had some type of PUD, which PRCD is a PUD. Uh, we had language in our subdivision regulations that allowed. The county to deviate from their standard subdivision regulations to match a development plan. And we would do that to create that consistency, so that the townships could have more of the desired look that they wanted. Um, right now, I agree without them having that in their la- in their. Subdivision regulations that they probably have to go with what the county tells them. But I would argue that we should go to the county and try to get something in there that would allow you to have a little more discretion.
And to do that, we should leave this.
I would leave that in there.
Okay.
So no change on each.
Correct.
No, um.
And we, you just mentioned that, um. That that this is also a technically a PUD, so this is, this is a planned district. But no, we're in here, we call it a planned district. Maybe we should. Cause it does make it very distinct then from a standard district.
I I would do that under thirty three point oh one, where it talks about section five nineteen point oh two one C of Ohio Revise Code. Those are all planned districts. So I would put it there.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Uh, and we had wording, I think in Article thirteen that we agreed on with Scott the last time I was here about. Putting in something about we shoved plan unit all the way to the end of the sentence, but it was up in the first or second sentences. I don't, I don't think I have my notes.
Yeah, I don't think I have that down in here.
Well, under the PRCD though, the word plans right in there.
Right.
It's a planned uh residential conservation district.
And.
That's always right, we could put it in there in thirty three oh one somewhere.
Yeah, that that would be, it should fit there.
Yeah, we can make that work.
You, the the last draft I have from Scott does not have PUD or planned in that sentence. And that may be, that may not be the last version that we decided on, but.
Now, I'm just saying that the the title of the district itself has the word planned in it. Plan.
For the Article thirteen.
But not Article thirty three.
No, not, not Article thirty three.
So we're gonna try to squeeze PUD somewhere in that thirty three oh one.
Into the uh into the first paragraph under thirty three point oh one.
HI, um pavement standards for condominium drives. Um, we've been taking condominium out because it's an ownership. Not a style, uh maybe subdivision drives instead of condominium.
We wanna say private?
And we also changed, private is good.
It already said drives.
And then, so that's in two places.
Yep, I see that.
Um, and the, at the end of that paragraph, the Delaware County Engineers Location and Design Manual. I looked it up, uh, I couldn't find it. Uh, there's a Delaware County. Engineers Design, Construction and Surveying Standards Manual. That's what's on their website, I don't know if that's.
We'll look into it.
So what you're looking into is to get the correct title inserted there.
Yes. Uh, pavement standards.
On K, are we removing asphalt as well?
I would like to. Um.
On it.
And and I would add, um, instead of, um. A minimum of five foot wide walking or bike path is required for conservation subdivisions, I would take out the ten foot. I would just say a minimum of five. You wanna double?
I think, I think if you're gonna have pedestrians and bikes on the same unit, you want a little more than five.
So a minimum of five foot wide walking or ten foot wide bike.
If you want, or you can say multi use, I don't wanna say bike.
We've been using bike pretty much everywhere. Um, and then the last sentence, the township may also require paved or unpaved walkways. Um, I thought we were giving the developers. An idea of exactly what they were gonna need, and we're saying here, we may want, we may or may not, and I would just take it out, I would say. Um. In line with the rural character and feel of the area and and to connect residential. Areas and opens.
Okay, I see what you're saying, yep.
Um, or maybe start the sentence to connect residential areas and open spaces and to provide connections to.
I like saying feel of the area and to connect residential areas and open spaces.
Right. And 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 maybe surrounding neighborhoods existing or potential.
So what is this last sentence going to say then?
I don't know.
I'm gonna say, shall be, shall be constructed as to meander through the development in line with the rural character and feel of the area. And to connect residential and open spaces. And then you wanted to add and.
And and ma- and maybe to provide connections to surrounding neighborhoods existing and potential. And that's verbiage that came from somewhere else.
How about to connect existing and potential residential areas and open space?
Good.
Yeah, that makes it much simpler.
I hope you're getting this.
Yep, I got it. Yeah, you know what, that might be.
Yeah, if this mic is on, it shouldn't pick you up and it's got a longer cord. On L, can we add native deciduous broadleaf street trees?
Yep.
I think we did that in the mixed use.
I think we did too.
Uh, M Balkan area, we're gonna put a table, uh, table thirty three two on this.
My my only question really was with, um. The minimum lot with stuff, are are these the same for a single family dwelling as well as for. Uh, common wall dwellings?
So, that's a good question, um. Cause it says total single. Family, so I was thinking single family when I was thinking sixty, seventy and eighty. Um, so we should probably say sixty feet, sixty, seventy, eighty feet per unit. No, cause that might be a hundred and fifty.
He jumped on that quick.
Maybe the eighty foot can only be used for the. Two unit.
So we're gonna add another line in this table.
So you you'll have two eighty foot or wider, or you'll just redefine the one that's there?
Um, yeah, I instead of adding a line, I think I would just redefine eighty foot would be for a single family or or two unit.
Okay.
And then define sixty and seventy are only for single family.
That's or or common wall.
Yeah.
Um, other places, I I think in our definitions, um. Common wall dwellings can be more than just two.
I thought so too, but I looked it up and it and the definition says two.
Cause we've been talking with Scott though about. Using common wall instead of condominiums or condominiums instead of common wall, and I don't remember if we decided to go on that.
Condominium is being taken out.
Yeah.
So it's going, we're going with common wall, but common walls can only be with two, I think, or we've used it in other places. When.
I thought we had referred to them as multifamily. If they were more than one common wall.
Where do we define common wall?
We defined it in the um definitions that went with the mixed use district, and it does say it's two.
Yeah, yeah, common wall, single wall. One dwelling on each side. Multifamily is.
So we got rid of condominiums and changed that too.
Correct, because that's the ownership style, not.
A housing style.
Uh, at the, uh, the asterisks below the table thirty three point two. Uh, just to note, build, the way the building height is described here. Um, is not the ways as it's defined in. Article four, whether it's a problem or not.
I I think we should make it consistent if possible, and since Article four already exists, if we can make this.
But we're talking about fifteen foot from the en- edge of the building, cause and not, you know, not on the. Established grade is.
Are you, are you talking about an existing definition of height, not one that I included?
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, in our existing. We need to keep it with this, and I think Molly might be texting me, so hold on a second. It wasn't her, it was somebody else.
Yeah, we had.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, usually on subdivision, you'll have an engineer set the grade. Versus out here in the country, you know, people pretty much set their own grade. So to keep a uniformity uh through the subdivision for various reasons. Uh, drainage, et cetera, um, I would go with the set grade. Uh, established uh grading, uh, building pad grade. As shown on the approved grading plan for the development, that grade has been set by an engineer. You understand what I'm saying?
And you're not just, it's just one, uh, uh, one house out in isolation.
Correct.
Right, yeah, that's, so you got the guy, so yeah, you got the guy on five acres over here on Green Cove. Doing something different than somebody over on Harlem, but in here, everybody's going to follow a grade standard. Set by an engineer.
What do we do with the definition?
Well, this is overriding it, basically.
Because it's closer.
You, this is, we can add language in that says in lieu of. Height as defined.
Our definition is the vertical distance to the highest point of the roof measured from the finished grade established, not closer than fifteen feet. To the exterior, exterior wall.
But on this table, we have an asterix, and then it says building height is measured to the highest point of the roof from the established building grade. As shown on the approved grading plan for the development, so to me, that overrides.
Yeah, I would agree.
Well, for, yes, for this overlay district, it definitely would, but it already says what Jim's suggesting.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
So then leave it.
Uh, double asterisk, um, I don't understand the wording at the, um, the end of that sense. Uh, side load garages shall provide at least twenty four feet of paved apron exclusive of the two foot side lot line for single family detached dwellings on fee simple. Ownership lots, I don't know if that's a period. Um, attached units or detached condominiums as approved per the.
That needs to come out.
That whole sentence.
Yeah.
Happy with that?
So the whole sentence, attached units or detached condominiums as approved for the global plan, that's giving it.
Done.
In N, are we writing out? The fifteen hundred square feet. And then two thousand square feet, and then putting those numbers in parentheses.
Um, yeah, I would, I would put the numbers in parentheses and put the. And and put the word wording in. Um, and then the, uh, in the second sentence, one and a half or two, two should not be capitalized. And in the second sentence, minimum four hundred eighty square feet should be written out with parentheses around the numbers.
There's, there's been discussion these.
Jim, Jim had a question.
I'm fine.
We kicked this around, um, at the planning committee meeting back and forth, up and down, um.
About garages or what?
About minimum square footage. And whether we allow smaller houses. We never came to it. It, we never came to a a resolution that sticks, I don't know, leave it the way it is, there's reasons to leave it the way it is. We can't. I I guess we could diverge from that, because that's not one of the three.
It can diverge, and most of your houses will be bigger.
Yeah.
But this, this does leave leeway for. Fifty five and over, uh, two families. You know, cause they won't, they won't be real big, but, uh, they could have smaller footage doubles. For fifty five and over communities.
Yeah, and I imagine you do it by community, you don't just say, well, I'm gonna let one or two tiny houses in, it's gotta be a whole community.
Right, that's usually the way, uh, the only time you run into something like this and somebody ends up with a problem lot. That they can't get a standard size house on.
Yeah.
But that's.
Yeah, it would be handled through a divergence, I'm recommending that we move on, because we're, it's already nine o'clock.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm I'm happy with this.
We're not halfway through yet. One document, Tom's probably got changes on every page.
Oh my. That page, the only thing I I am questioning is, is the spacing of the two sub. One, two and three, I think that's a three, but it's under the picture.
Does this, I have the same thing we ran into on the last one where I was talking about, it says. You can do eighty percent brickstone, and then it immediately thereafter says brickstone or other natural materials may be utilized as an accent. Providing it does not exceed eighty, twenty percent.
We will change that.
We, I was gonna say, we changed that, yeah, so if we can, I don't remember what we changed it to, but if they match, we're good.
And Holly, I I would suggest, just for formatting, that that if you look at the, uh, the thumbnail photograph on page, on the next page. The grass, um, because it's in the right hand margin, it it doesn't interfere with your. So if you move these two thumbnails to the right hand margin, you can, you can get your indexing. And we. We have a, uh, again, a discrepancy, if you look at um Q two on the next page that I walk by the grass. Uh, it shows minimum of fifty percent and then fifty percent in perens and seventy percent in perens. You see where I'm, and then if you look on the page we were on, building materials, we've got eighty. Eighty percent, so the the formatting is. You know, one, I I like the formatting on on the right hand page.
Fifty and the seventy?
It just says fifty percent and then fifty percent in numbers, I would. I would do that, but. The last sentence on that page under two triple I roofing. That roofs are prohibited and pitch roofs and. Other roof types may be proved where appropriate as determined by the zoning commission and township trustees. With development plan approval. I think that can be. Made. I I don't think it needs all that, um, other rooftops may be used, maybe. I mean, who, it's the zoning commission that determines a a divergence.
I don't know, divergences get approved all the way through. So the, actually, the trustees have the final say on divergences.
So I I I'm just real uncomfortable with that last sentence, and I don't know how to fix it.
What, what is bothering you about that?
It's just got too many words in it and, and you know.
Excuse, which is already adopted with that language.
Is that the exact language? Um, P, street lighting, uh, the last sentence. Height shall not exceed twelve feet in height is measured from the ground, or do we say established grade again?
Also in relation to P, is there any reason we didn't get more specific about the. Ca- specifically the color of the lighting in here? Versus uh, the other, what is this? Mixed use overlay district, we got a lot more specific about the lighting.
Because this is gonna be straight lighting and the township's really gonna decide what that is. Versus the mixed use is parking lot.
I'm just concerned, especially in the residential area, we're gonna end up with a barn like the one on six oh five with like this wild. The bright lighting.
Well, I can't exceed but point three foot candles, so.
Okay, I don't know what that means.
That's the, that's the intensity, so it's not color, but it's the brightness of it. And and it's shown on a metric plan.
There, yeah, there's, there's a difference between those bright whites that are. Are out there versus the older sort of a yellowish tint.
Warm white.
So warm white versus cold.
Just trying to make sure we keep light pollution down as we're working through these.
That illustration below P, does that need? Your number, I don't know. Should, should that be figured too? Thirty three point two, good, okay. Right of ways got hyphens, good, um, the last. So this is Q five. Uh, existing tree lines must be preserved and a written out two hundred.
We'll, we'll go through and we'll find every one of those.
Okay, I won't, I won't bring them up anymore, but in that same sentence. Uh, but here it says an existing township or county road. And remember what I had before, state, county or township roadway. And I think it should be the same, right? Uh, and then uh, established from the posed right of way. Is that, is that anticipated right of way, or I I mean?
Yeah, that goes back to the numbers, the.
Yeah, I know, but but was, were those proposed, were those what we're anticipating they're gonna be?
For anticipating that those roads potentially.
But should we say here instead of proposed, should we say anticipated? Right.
The terminology that everybody uses.
Next page, we had added something in about undesirable trees, something about just invasives in general.
Number seven.
The, I don't, however, we worded it in the last one is fine, yeah.
Going back up to um lowercase I, very top of the page. Uh, this two hundred foot buffer, two hundred should be written out. And then at the end of that. Development from any, here it says county or township roads, it's state, county or township roadway.
Is the CRCD on the bottom of the page part of a table that should be on the next page? And that is now table or figure.
Is this, yeah, is this a, what is this, what it be, is this a figure or a table?
The table, and so it'll be table thirty.
The one with the trees.
That's a figure.
Figure.
I think thirty three point three.
Oh, I'm sorry, the pictures, yeah, figure.
Is it safe to say that you can just go through a number, all of those as well, and we can stop bringing that up?
Number six. The, the la- the, the end of that sentence, um. Achieve the objectives of these design standards, I would put a period there and take out as recommended by the zoning commission approved by the board, maybe not. Take that out?
Number seven is, is. Is an entryway feature the same as like those gated communities in New Albany, is that what that means?
If you go to the next page, that's what I'm considering, like an entry into the subdivision, an entry feature. That can be incorporated into the buffer zone.
And and, but that, it would be a gated kind of thing that entry to that.
Yeah, it may not be, like, that one's not gated, but it's. Noting that that's the.
Yeah, um, and that, that is fine, but as soon as you put gates across, then all that stuff we put in about. Pads and walkways and bike ways becomes very difficult for anybody except anybody who lives there to access those.
Most likely, the county's not gonna allow it to be gated, because they're public roadways.
It's not, yeah, because these are not private streets.
I, number, a letter R, parking. Is that specifically off street parking?
Hey, what table are we up to here?
We'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay, but it is a table.
This is a, a question about the, this table here. Well, if all developments are gonna require a walking path, so they'll all have to have these twenty space parking lots.
Let's say neighborhood parks, let's take the walking paths out.
I'm good with that. Um, and I, if there's a room, I would add minimum number of required parking spaces, uh, off street parking spaces. But since these letter, these are alphabetized. So it's gonna no longer be R, it's gonna, because the off street is gonna go up somewhere.
Well, I say leave it how it is, because the next thing says off street parking shall be provided, now we were not renumbering and restructuring everything.
So what are the signs for exactly in a CRCD? Because if it's only residential, are we talking just a sign at like the entrance of, okay?
That's why we only have the ground mounted there.
But, so it can't be like on the front of this barn entrance?
They'd have to ask for a D.
Number four, I residential subdivision identification sign, uh, the last. Line of that, it's four square feet. You're gonna get those, so.
Not, not to talk about those anymore.
But one question about in.
You didn't say anything about that.
Oh wait, you might go back.
Where's your popcorn?
And I can just pop and stick the cord back.
Uh, under um lowercase I, 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 I C. It talks about no other extensions may be administratively approved and must be approved by the board of zoning appeals. That's the first and only time I've seen them mentioned in this.
Where are you?
I'm, I'm on that.
This page with the real estate sign, C.
And so just, just to the right of the real estate sign.
That should not be there.
Take it out?
It's board of zoning appeals is listed twice.
Yes. So take it, no other extensions.
In fact, that entire sentence is listed twice. Once in the middle and once at the.
Well, that's because ones for the larger signs up to ninety days, the other one's up to a hundred and eighty days.
Yeah, so.
I think that needs to say trustees, instead of what is any of those.
Oh, okay.
Don't take it out.
Don't take it out.
Uh, board. Which one are we leaving?
Well, we're leaving both, ones for ninety and ones for a hundred and eighty days, it depends upon the size of them.
But we're changing BZA to trustees.
Yeah, but BZA will say board of trustees.
Okay.
Are we saying board of trustees, even though we've said township trustees most other places?
Usually said board of trustees.
We have?
So it's not board of zoning appeals, board of trustees. And I guess you can go through and try to be consistent about using board of trustees.
Not allowed to mention right of way. Uh, T, uh, all utilities in, I don't know, CRCD subdivision. I think there's a comma after existing land uses. Under, un- under letter U. If the zoning commission determines that additional measures are needed to buffer existing land uses, comma. They may require such as part of the development plan approval.
I'm not looking at this, because this is where you're getting the zoning commission approving the divergences.
You're giving up?
All right, Bob, you go home and get tuned in.
So if you go to the procedure section under thirty two point oh seven A. Where the trustees are approving it, and it talks about the divergences being approved. So we need to change V on the development standards to say trustees. Instead of zoning commission.
Board of trustees.
But isn't this something that will be submitted with a development plan originally?
Correct, but the final decision of the development plan is board trustees.
And so we can look at them, but they get final say.
The board trustees as part of a development plan approval. May grant divergences from any standard in this section, with the exception of density permitted. And I assume that, that the zoning commission gets to look at the divergences and make our recommendation as normally would.
So it will be, divergences will be submitted with, as part of the development plan. And, and just, just another. Comment, we often refer to natural building materials as wood, brick or stone, brick is not a natural material.
Well, the clay it's made.
We repeat that, yeah, yeah. But your Adobe houses are a little bit different from.
So you're fine with Adobe subdivisions then, is that what I'm hearing?
In, in some uh climates, yes.
Not in Ohio?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't count on it lasting very long.
Uh, section thirty three oh eight, A, very end of that large paragraph.
Before the I?
Before the I. Either individual or coming and subject to approval by the township, funding generated through a new, new community authority. And I think, or a joint economic development agreement, I don't think you can have enough in the CRCD. So it just should be through a new community authority and probably NCA. And is there any other mechanism or just that's it?
We could add C to it on there. NCA is the only thing.
That's it, okay, so it may be used to manage the required open space, so that comes out.
Tom, are you gonna mention that there's a space between the H and the E and D at the, under the line above the joint economic development?
The word the has an extra space in it.
Okay. There is the word there. So on. On this page just above three. To condominium agreements. Um, if you go back to. Thirty, to the fade, just below thirty three oh eight title, A one, ownership of common open space. Was it all, was, was one, there is no two, we're gonna skip to three.
Yeah.
That'll renumber all.
Oh yeah, so condominium agreement should be two.
Right. Uh, create the answers or query maintenance of common open space.
This page intentionally left blank should be on a blank page?
No. Number three on the last page, the last part of the number three, that repeats what we've said, do we need that in there, is that? Cause that repeats. The funding from.
We don't need that.
The three comes out.
On the last page additionally, that funding generated through, that's when it just takes that whole sentence out.
And where it says this page is intentionally left blank should come out because, oh. When regional planning formats the zoning resolution, they put that in automatically where they need it, so it shouldn't be on any. Pages. Right? You got that Molly, take out. And, and on the other thing is, uh, the page numbers, I don't know if there are any page numbers in, in here, I numbered it myself so I could keep track.
Thirty two has page numbers, but Article. Thirty three did not.
So regional planning will put the page numbers in when they format the text, so there should be no page numbers, no intentionally left blank. Correct the formatting.
I like the page numbers.
Well.
They'll be there, just not.
The only, the only thing the page numbers do for right now is as we're dealing with graphs, they become useful, but they won't be. They will not be utilized once the document gets adopted. Did anyone else have any additional, uh, corrections? We got through to the last page. Ollie and Molly. Will it be possible for us to have this draft back? For the thirtieth?
I believe so. Molly, you, you've been doing most of these changes while we talk, haven't you? So, yeah.
Yeah, but there's a lot of formatting that's gotta be.
Um, yeah.
It'd be, I was thinking it'd be, sorry, it'd be good if we could have it back. Thursday.
Well, I'm not, I'm just wanting to make sure that I anticipate that we would get it back before the actual day. That we're having the meeting, but at the same time, I didn't even know whether you were considering that.
Yeah, we'll get it to you.
So, uh, the thirtieth is. Tuesday.
That's right after Memorial Day.
But see, it's, it's the day after Memorial Day. Guess I'll just ask you how Tom's suggesting Thursday, can we have it before? Can we have it by then?
Yeah, Tuesday, Wednesday.
The only, yeah, my, my only thing is my mom is having surgery tomorrow, so I. I should be able to review it Wednesday if she gets it.
I see her still nodding yes. All right, that sounds good. So Thursday. Uh, if you will, then just. Electronically send it. Uh, we will get it distributed then. I'll have Mike Cannon make the copies so that everybody can have a hard copy. Can't get necessarily get them delivered, but we can get them delivered electronically like everybody.
I was gonna say, is our new zoning assistant, will she do what Sherry did and drive him around to us? I really liked that. That was really convenient.
I, I doubt that's in the job description.
If it is ready by Thursday, the twenty fifth, the regional planning is meets then too.
Yeah, we, we, regional planning meets that day.
Yeah, but they're probably gonna use the old this version.
Right, correct.
Yeah, they will. I don't, yeah.
Okay.
And if we do get it early enough and I send it to Scott or you send it to Scott.
I think that confuses things when you throw something to him at a meeting.
I don't think he would want it.
I agree.
You know, he's, they, they've already dealt with or will have dealt with. The document that.
Before their meeting, so.
Okay.
And if they are, if they in fact point out the same kinds of things. Um, we will already have addressed it. Okay, so. We'll look forward then to receiving that. On Thursday. Um, the second part. Uh, procedures. Uh, Article thirty two.
I have much fewer.
Well, good.
You don't have much on this one.
Are you? Are you expecting to get through this whole thing today?
Uh, thirty two?
Yeah.
They'll go to.
With the expectations.
Well, we're gonna go as far as.
I only have one thing noted on that.
What you do use first?
Uh, if we look at page three, number three. A map showing all the contiguous adjoining adjacent and across from properties is the wording that we've used elsewhere.
Joining adjacent and across.
Across from. Properties.
Oh, yeah.
Properties instead of from the area.
Well, across the road.
A map showing all the contiguous adjoining adjacent and across from. The word from comes after the word across. On item number three.
Come on, item number two, and it does say across.
Yeah.
Oh, this, sorry, no, I'm, yeah, I'm on three.
All right, got it. That's all I had.
I have in. I had some other things.
I had thirty two point oh four. Somewhere in the middle ish. It says, and across from the proposed C R C D or P R C D. But I think earlier in this, we said. Not including but not limited to the C R C D and the P R C D, assuming that if we get another. C D added to a resolution, those would also be included. So should instead of C R C D or P R C D, should we just say? Proposed district maybe? Uh, or just something a little more general?
I've got some, some issues with some of the things we say in here. About. Then applying then to the existing P R C D.
Well. Let's deal with the first one here that Brittany brought up. Uh, and then we'll come back and deal with the rest of it. And section thirty two point oh four, is that paragraph A?
Yeah, paragraph A.
It was something.
Is there a way to address that that you can think of?
Just say from the proposed development.
Across from the proposed development, that would. Makes the generic then. Now, the other thing that I would, uh, I noted on that same paragraph. What's the language that, um, was decided upon? Um, in the trustee meeting, I thought we should use that same language here, applicant shall prepare and submit a formal application, including the development plan and.
Oh, yeah.
What did we say? Did we say ten?
It is, it was.
I think it was less.
No, we said and copies as determined.
No, 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 I'm talking about the trustees, they modify it. A different document.
I don't remember exactly right now, so we'll go back and get that language and make sure it matches.
We might as, the reason I'm bringing that up, Brittany, is that we may as well put it in here because the trustees were the ones who wanted it changed. And. They did, they did agree on it.
Yeah, I did figure out where. Why I only came up with twelve. Uh, copies. At the trustees meeting when we had always said thirteen, and that's because we used to have two alternates.
Yes. And that's true. Now we have zero.
Yeah, but we used to have thirteen because that was what we needed for.
When we had.
Yes.
So that you'll just modify that language to match. That, that's all I wanted to make sure that we did that because why go through that again?
And I know that the trustees agreed that it would be the zoning commission that determines how many copies, it should have been the zoning inspector if been thinking best of them. But it's too late for you.
So in the, the first. At the very top there. Um, the second line of the first sentence there, we talk about. The application and development plan comply with provisions of Article thirteen. But not thirty three.
Most, well. What paragraph are we in?
The first, the very top.
Yeah.
That's, that was a mistake. Yeah, I, I had that marked. I didn't have it marked on this copy, but yeah. That should have been Article thirty three.
It should be both.
Development plan will comply with the provisions of Articles.
Now Article thirteen or Article tw- uh, thirty three as applicable.
Yeah, through the process can, yeah, because we're talking about both here. I knew, uh, that was missing. Yeah, thanks, Junie.
And then this procedure applies to any conservation subdivision, maybe that's the wording we should use, conservation subdivision, including but not limited to the C R C D and the P R C D. So instead of development, maybe we should call conservation.
Yeah, and instead of making any reference specifically to the Articles, we can just do that.
Yeah, I like that. Well. I think no, and where it says development comply with the provisions, we have to reference.
Yeah, I think you need to.
Well. If we reference them, but we don't want to limit it to those. Is that what we're saying? But this, this procedure is really just. This is a procedure that can be applicable to any other conservation subdivision that we may in fact develop.
So we're now going to require a strip generation and connectivity memo for the P R C D?
Yes, because we had Steiners already having to change their roadways because they didn't have that.
Yeah. We discussed that briefly, I recall in our last. Meeting, and I thought we were going to add.
This is the, the Joe Clay's one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they've.
They've had to change that.
Submit a request for a change to us.
Yeah.
What we approved. They're gonna have to modify. Because they're being. Ordered, if you will, to do it by the county engineers.
And what was the modification?
I don't know specifically what it is.
There was, the eastern one was the stub one and the western leg was. The roundabout and they like flipped, not the roundabout, but the like turn around and they flipped.
They ended up actually moving some of the lots in order to accommodate the request.
Yeah, they flipped which one was the stub.
So they want, they want to pass through. Further east towards the.
That's right.
And the one that, that was originally designed, the ones near the entrance.
Closer to the front and they wanted it moved back.
It's, it's blocked off, so they're not gonna have connectivity through that. Like they're gonna only have it through.
Dead end street with, that's the one we're talking about that had to be moved back, and that was came from the engineer's office.
And so all the. All the parcels at that end of the. What would have been a roundabout. Had to be moved to make room for this road going through.
Yeah. So if we do this on the front end. Hopefully we'll avoid that in the future.
Yeah.
My other question was on this, the onsite walkabout.
Yeah.
Um, it has the applicant zoning inspector, one member of zoning vision, one member of Board of Trustees. We've always had the applicant or the representatives. Or sometimes and the representatives. Two members of the zoning commission. And one trustee.
I have them two members, that's fine.
And we're still under form.
We're under thirty two.
Thirty two, one, B.
And now we're B. Yeah. On site walkabout is one that Junie's talking about.
When you say one or two members of the zoning commission or just. No more than two members?
Up to two members.
The language that we used before was, uh, yeah, no more than two or up to two.
But we often don't get the actual applicant coming out, we get some representative.
We get a representative, yeah. Is that a problem? If it's since it says the applicant, can it not, I mean, the applicant?
It can be the representative, but I added the applicant or representative.
Yeah.
The zoning inspector, comma, up to. Two members of the zoning commission.
Yeah.
Uh, under, um, oh, going back to the, uh, the preamble, uh, the last. The last line. Where it says for the purposes of. I think you need to insert the word section with a capital S. Five nineteen twelve of the Ohio Revised Code. Um, but. Um, if you read the last sentence. Uh, this approval should not be considered to be an amendment to the Township Zoning Resolution. We haven't talked anywhere about an approval. Anywhere. So.
Where, where are you now?
I'm, I'm in the preamble, right under art, right under the title. That, that one paragraph underneath the title, above, above section thirty two oh one. So the last sentence reads, this approval shall not be considered. But we haven't talked about an approval anywhere. There is no this.
So just remove this?
We'll take that sentence out because we talk about.
That anywhere else?
Well, I'm pretty sure we do. But we should.
Well, maybe back here. Can't remember for sure, but I think it is back there.
We need to add it to.
Just gonna move it to thirty two oh five. In that whole last.
Yeah, that's the best place for thirty two oh five. So we're just gonna delete it in this. Preamble.
Um, and then in section thirty two oh one A. Existing features, site analysis, map and conceptual development plan. We then go on to talk about, and the first thing we talked about maps and sketches, and I wasn't sure. What we had, what we had settled on, it was a map too formal and too much money, and we're just talking about an informal sketch. Based on an, an old survey or not sure.
I think you still need to call it a map. Cause you're listing so many things on it.
I'm okay with that. I'm just, I mean, we were talking at one point about trying to. Not make it expensive for somebody to. At least initially start the process.
Right, you can. Pull a. A Google map down off the web and it just mark things up.
But I think where it says that the applicant shall submit an existing features, site analysis, map. And then I think we need to insert the words and a conceptual development plan. Cause it doesn't talk about conceptual development plan anywhere in that paragraph A.
It does say conceptual development plan is.
In the heading.
In the heading, correct.
But it doesn't say.
And it doesn't say it has to be submitted. It should say that, I agree.
And then I would say one sentence beyond, you know, then this map. And conceptual, I would, I would add conceptual development plan wherever it says map in both places. Shall include general soil types, et cetera, et cetera. And where it says it such as, it's still such as ponds, wetlands and permanent. And water courses. I don't know if that should be permanent and intermittent water courses.
You know, a lot of those.
Yeah.
The intermittent ones.
Stormwater should be one word and. Facilities, I would say features or management features. Instead of facilities, because it's not necessarily something built up. It could be a, uh, just a swell to start with.
Uh, not a biggie, but on page two. We've got section thirty. It says thirty one point oh three, it should be thirty two.
There's some other things in that section.
Yeah. I just have one more thing on, uh.
First page.
Uh, under C. Uh, the applicant shall apply for a preliminary review meeting with the zoning commission. I thought we'd been. Maybe a preliminary meeting or an informal discussion, I wasn't sure.
I would, I would prefer informal discussion.
I, I, I'm fine with that.
I would prefer the preliminary review meeting and I'm not thrilled that the trustees took it completely out of.
Also, apply, do they have to apply for a meeting or do they just?
Well, I just said schedule.
Request.
The African show or request, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a, we don't necessarily have to. Make it a formal application.
No. Show request and here is an informal discussion. Uh, with the zoning commission. Her initial review of the. And this is the initial review of the conceptual development plan, right?
The thing is that we have developed. The steps for a preliminary review meeting, I mean, we have a whole. Page of what the procedure is for that. The steps for a preliminary review meeting. I mean, we have a whole page of what the procedure is for that.
I, I will tell you why I don't like the word preliminary, and it's because, um. Preliminary tends to go with a different type of PUD, not the five nineteen point oh two one C. And it typically refers to what the actual legislative process to rezone. And then you come back with a final development plan as your administrative. And I'm afraid if somebody gets the preliminary mixed in with this, that they're gonna think that it's a legislative process, and I don't want anybody to confuse that.
Can we just, instead of using the term preliminary, I think we just say an informal.
That's what Tom suggested.
An informal review meeting.
Could we, could we even just say a review meeting or something to take the informal out there, Joni? Would that help you if we didn't say it was informal?
Um. Sure.
But it's still gonna be based on the conceptual development plan, not a.
Yeah.
It's gonna be.
Yeah, but if it, if the word informal isn't there, then maybe people take it a little more seriously and that can. Help bridge the gap between informal and preliminary.
Okay. Uh, that's fine. I don't, I'm not married to even the word informal. We can say, the applicant shall request a review meeting.
Or initial review of the conceptual development plan, yeah.
Um, and then in section thirty-two oh two. A, one, um, ITE trip generator book.
International.
But it, it should be trip generation manual, eleventh edition. Or most current edition.
It's trip.
I'd just go with most current edition.
Yeah, you could. Uh.
The trip generation.
Man, trip, trip generation manual is what it's called.
And it's not what's here.
Not exactly. You picked up the section number?
Um, there's some. Areas in, in that section when these.
I can't change that section. That section was written by legal counsel. I would go into that section.
You've got the zoning commission chair and zoning inspector shall decide.
That's, that was written by legal.
If they need, I mean, it's. Okay, whatever. They're, they're, they're using it a lot where it shouldn't be appropriate, but.
How much did we change the soli since it was written by?
She doesn't wanna change any of it.
No, I changed it.
It was written by legal counsel. I didn't have one single type on that section.
All right, if, the way that that sentence that she's just pointing out though, if the zoning commission chair and the zoning inspector decides.
Yeah, there, there's.
What about the S?
There's those kind of issues. There's more than, more than that one.
Dramatically.
That's all.
There's some others, right?
Yeah, all the other things were dramatic things, but if, if it's. If it's.
I don't know.
The legal thing, just leave it the same and.
Do we have an opportunity for legal to counsel to revisit?
Eventually we'll change.
Ah.
Those things anyway.
We can just put a sick after the whole thing. I didn't write this, it's just the way it is.
It's, alright, that's fine. No more discussion about that. I don't want to prolong.
Alright, go on. Um, but, one, one, um, not typographical, but, but this is more, more, more of an issue. Uh, section thirty-two oh two. Uh, is a change from how we've normally, how we've traditionally done, where the generation connectivity memo. I'm okay with that because I saw what happened with Steiner not having done that upfront. Uh, but we have also talked about getting the. Um, stormwater management plan in place before people start laying out. Too many things. And I'd like to get that upfront as soon as the trip generation memo. I don't know how to do that, but would you understand why I want to get it up front? And I think, I mean, in some documents, I've seen it as a SWMP. And some as an SMMP, stormwater management master plan. Um. We're going up to Delaware on Wednesday afternoon, Wednesday morning to talk to the drainage people.
Ask them.
I'll let you know. Alright.
So Tom, are you suggesting that what we would do in the, where it says trip generation and connectivity member, we would also then be adding into that heading?
I would.
Stormwater.
I would have.
Management plan.
I would have a separate heading for it, because I think it, it, it's different.
So you're talking about adding another section, section thirty-two oh three to pick that up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That will renumber everything then.
That's true.
Is that, what's the feasibility of that from your perspective, Holly?
The stormwater plan, um.
On the front end, basically. What we're saying.
Too much. I think it's gonna really take that from developers. Um. I have to think about it. I can't make a decision about it right now.
But we can table that till next week and keep moving.
Yeah, yeah.
What exactly are we doing next week? If it's not reviewing these?
It is reviewing these, I think.
With, with an audience.
Yeah.
Well, next week. We will have the input from regional planning. To go through that. As we look at this, the revised.
So can I make a request then? It, can we look at just other big picture things that we need to get answers on and then?
Yes.
Head home?
Yes.
I have nothing then.
Well, I have something under thirty-two oh five.
Good, go ahead.
Condition of approval. Um, you talk about requiring the, the NCA stuff. I don't think that's appropriate for Article thirteen. It is for Article thirty-three, but not for thirteen.
Uh, I'm sorry, point out which one again.
Thirty-two oh six, we require this, uh, new community authority connection. Um, and I, I don't think that's necessary for Article thirteen. So that's where I see a big difference in. The rules for thirty-three and thirteen.
But theoretically, you could have. PRCD, a twenty-five acre PRCD, and a twenty-five acre CRCD. Contiguous to each other or close enough to each other to become part of the same NCA. And they're both twenty-five acre minimum. And pretty much the only difference that we're trying to enforce is sewers or no sewer.
Um, I don't think we'll have any more no sewer stuff. If we make them do all this extra stuff.
They don't care about the NCA because a lot of times they couple it with tips and other things. It makes a better deal for them. That the developers will like the NCA.
Yeah. In fact, I just asked Holly that question today because I talked to other developers and I didn't have an answer. Yeah, but yeah, they are interested because there's money.
Yeah. But, okay. Alright, I, I do think it's still important to keep. Um, Article thirteen in play because there's not gonna be sewers everywhere for a while.
Yes, it is implied. It is implied. There's a lot of interest in that.
Um, can I go back to? Thirty-two oh four. E.
What number?
Thirty-two oh four. B. Thirty-three. That's below there. That'll be two oh four, Tom, yes.
I think we're thirty-three. Taking out Jeds?
Thirty-two oh four. B.
Really looking at big picture.
Thirty-three.
I was trying.
I tried.
A letter outline a funding plan?
It's a strike.
Yes. Jeds come out.
Oh, yeah, Jeds. That didn't mean.
And then thirty-six on the next page, I wonder talking about, um.
Oh, thirty-six.
Divergences and towards the middle of that, um, permitted uses were also part of that.
Yes.
It should be except for density permitted uses and percentage required open space.
Absolutely, and I think standards contain an Article thirteen or Article thirty-three at the top line.
And third from the bottom of that line too. Right.
Said fourth in Article thirteen or Article twenty-one, which are what, the general development standard?
I was gonna add thirty-three. To that list.
Yeah.
Thirty-two oh seven C.
Seven C, whether the application.
Yeah, that one.
Are compatible?
Yeah, take out the mixed use overlay district. But conservation.
Oh, yeah, that's. I caught that on another copy. I've got too many copies. I'm looking at a new copy. I had that marked.
What are we, what are we gonna call that?
Conservation subdivision overlay districts, articles.
Alright.
I know what it is.
Um, and in, in that same paragraph, the next line. Um, the purpose of the conservation subdivision overlay district articles of this resolution. And are in keeping with the, I would insert intent of the most recent Harlem Township comprehensive plan. And in number D, uh, drainage structures. Drainage features.
Which one?
Is, um.
What letter?
In, in letter D, the third line.
Okay.
Drainage features instead of drainage structure.
All structures, I see.
Um, and then I have got to talk to my wetland buddies, my, uh. Watershed buddies, whether the drainage plan is designed as to not negatively impact surrounding properties. Um, I'm not sure that's gonna be enough, but I'm not ready to.
Wouldn't take it out.
That's even worse, but.
No, he, he wants it to be more detailed.
Uh, section thirty-two oh eight.
Um, we do J first and just add a, an S to restrictions.
Ooh.
Conditions, safeguards and restrictions.
Good. Yep.
Can I, can I make the motion that we pause until next week? My dad is watching the girls and he's, I can't keep him there forever.
Okay, what other big, big things? Um. Thirty-two eleven, that one should be an A if we're following the same format. And there's no end of the sentence in, in A one D.
A.
Thirty-two eleven, it should be A there, yes.
It's final and is.
And is what?
Where are you?
Um.
Thirty-two eleven.
Yep.
And that first part should be an A rather than one.
Right.
And then down under one D, there's no end of the last sentence.
The board of trustees actually is final and is.
Final.
Um, only appealable to the courts, I think, so I'll add that.
Um, and then the last line on that where it says thirty-two dot eleven should be dot A dot one. But, um. Thirty-two oh eight, B, the second line. Uh, it looks like there was something missing and. Um, shall be made unless the provisions of section extension of modification in brackets. I don't know what, I don't know what belongs there.
Get the correct reference.
That's all I had.
Alright.
Make a motion?
Uh, no, we need a, need a motion to, uh, recess the hearing to a.
I make a motion that we recess the hearing to May thirtieth.
At seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five second.
No, seven forty-five, because then we'll have, we also need to recess the meeting.
Okay.
So the hearing.
We go back into the meeting and then we'll recess it to.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, the hearing, um, all, all those in favor of recess to, uh, May thirtieth at seven forty-five?
Alright.
Can I also make a motion that we?
Now we're in recess and we'll call the, uh, regular meeting back to order, call the roll. Uh, Virginia Lewis.
Here.
Here, here.
Mike Caler here.
Here, here.
Johnny, Brittany, alright.
Can I make a motion that we recess the meeting?
Coming out of recent, uh, the recess, but now we're going to recess to May, May thirtieth at seven thirty.
Yes, I make that motion.
Thank you.
Second, second.
Second, that's second by Joni and all favor.
Hi.
Hi, opposed, no? Alright, recess to May three, hope for the meeting and the hearing.
Alrighty, see you all next week.
Have a good weekend.
The hearing is at seven thirty, or the meeting is at seven thirty, the hearing is at seven forty-five.
One centric, thank you.
Well, we have to have the meeting so that we can continue the process.
Okay, let's turn off everything.
Um, yeah. Need to. I know, I thought she. She didn't go over, I'll go over and turn it off.
Some of the smaller ones may not be.
Yeah.
If I, if I can, as we are, uh, line. So.
Okay.
So normally happens.
The hearing was, uh, recessed at nine fifty-four, the meeting was recessed at nine fifty-five.
Features.